Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mrs. Burns, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Parentano.
Here.
Mr. Allen.
Mrs. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Boyle. Ms. Boyle.
Irene, you're muted.
Hold on, she's muted, I got her.
Okay.
Hold on, go ahead Irene.
Go ahead Irene.
Here.
Mrs. Hellenback.
I'm here.
Mr. Kovitz.
Here.
Mr. Marington.
Here.
Mr. Cirillo.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
We have a form.
Alrighty, you're all standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic. Which stands one nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Free, free, and righteous for all.
Thank you. Alrighty, we have a couple special action items that we're going to start off with. Notice to Mrs. Burns, all votes are a roll call vote.
Okay.
We have action item 2.01, continuation of the suspension of policy 006.01, whereas the novel coronavirus COVID-19 continues to create an environment where the Board of School Directors is unable to hold its meeting in a physical location. Now therefore be it resolved in accordance with Board Policy 003, that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the continuations of the temporary suspension of policy 006.1, originally approved March 24, 2020, until the next meeting of the Board. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Sullivan, all in favor? Roll call vote, Mrs. Burns.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hellenback.
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle.
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz.
Yes.
Mr. Mar- or, Mr. Marington.
Yes.
Mr. Parentano.
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Byrne, motion passes nine zero. Move on to section 3.01. The Board met in executive session on Monday, March 30, 2020, and earlier this evening, April 14, to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. Our district mission statement, in the Shaminie community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner. Mrs. Burns, do we have any announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Mr. Jones, Superintendent's report.
Good evening, I'm not sure, does that Superintendent's report actually show on the screen right now?
Yes.
I have, yes.
Alright, so that, that's just a click on the Board docs every month, the Superintendent's report actually twice a month, at each of the meetings, the Superintendent's report's available to the public. Typically, at a public meeting, I will just mention the items that are a little bit more in detail in the report itself. So, the first up is the fact that we're continuing in a virtual meeting format all the way through April, we've identified that. But May, though we list them as to be determined, at this point we expect that those will continue to be virtual meetings. We do have a common address on the website, so that you can always go to the same location to get the link that'll get you to the Zoom meeting, where you can click in or call in using the meeting ID. And we appreciate the people who are here with us this evening. School closure, the Governor, just on Thursday, the Governor extended the school closures for the buildings through the balance of the school year, for the rest of the 1920 school year. Schools found out just about the same time the public did, at the time that it was released that morning. That is not totally unexpected, given some of what has happened in other states. And we were very prepared in terms of the planning that we put into place to start our Phase 3 of the virtual learning. And so what we started with Phase 3 just yesterday is something that we feel very confident should provide a strong foundation for the balance of the school year. You will be hearing about that during the presentation portion, because the Education Development Committee's presentation was moved so that this would be part of this public meeting. So you'll hear from Dr. McGee and Michelle Burkholder, our Directors of Education for Secondary and Elementary respectively. They will give that presentation shortly. Our school closing art challenge was part of what was displayed before we started our meeting. Chris Stanley has done a really nice job keeping the community engaged, and we've had a whole slew of different art contests of sorts that different district students have participated in. And Chris displayed some of their work for us beforehand. The enrollment report for the school month of, I guess it was really March, is included as an attachment. There was a district newsletter, and will continue to be a newsletter put out monthly. The last one was focused mostly on the state of schools, given the closures. And maybe some of it gets dated, because it seems like by the, by the hour, certainly by the day, things change. But one thing that was in that newsletter back then, when it was published, was the new news that the testing, the PSA, PSSA, and the Keystone testing for this year is not going to happen, which makes perfect sense. It made sense at the time. Even if we were going to get back into the buildings, it makes obvious sense now that we're not going to be back in the buildings themselves. As I said, the online learning experience is going to be explained in our presentation. We do have a variety of different ways of looking to help our students, both social emotionally, our food program continues with our breakfast and lunch packages. That's from 11:01 at six different sites. All the elementary schools basically, even though it says Pequesting and Sandberg, but there's elementary schools attached to those buildings. So all city elementary school locations are where we have our food program. And now we're serving every student. The federal government has expanded that program, so that it's not just students who had at the time qualified for the free and reduced lunch program. I think, given the fact that there are so many families that may be in need, that weren't necessarily part of that program, the government has now extended the program to be any youth up to age 18 who lives in our community. And so we've gone from maybe 250 meals up to 900 meals now, on a daily basis. We continue to want to make sure we thank all the workers who do great work for us. A lot of what are classified as essential workers earlier when we first closed down, our custodian maintenance people, but they continue on a more limited basis in our buildings doing work. The food services people have been phenomenal, we thank them for the good work that they're doing with our children. There were some great pictures on our Facebook last night, yesterday, because parents sent them in to Chris Stanley for what was, he was calling the second day one of the school year, because yesterday was our kickoff for our most aggressive part of our online program. And again, our technology staff, all of them have just been phenomenal in helping get, getting us to a point where we can be successful. That's my presentation, thank you very much, Mr. Parentano.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I understand we have a presentation this evening from Dr. McGee and Mrs. Burkholder regarding our education review, and also that we can cover Mr. Stanley's Community Relations Coordinator art challenges?
We did that.
We did.
He did a great job.
Okay.
Thank you to him. And Dr. McGee and Ms. Burkholder are going to review what's called the Continuity of Education Plan for the District. And Dr. McGee does have the ability to present, he has control. It's a little scary, but we're going to release control to him at this point.
I appreciate it.
Alright, Dr. McGee.
Alright, can everybody hear me? Let's start.
Welcome, Mrs. Burkholder.
Hello, everyone.
Can everyone see the presentation before we get going here?
Looks good.
Alright. So Michelle and I would like to walk you through what's happened over the last, losing track, maybe three or four weeks, and what we plan on seeing happening in the future, and then answer, answer any questions that you may have. If someone told me somewhere along the way in my years in education, we'd have to turn an excellent school system like the Shaminie into an online system in X weeks, I would have laughed at them. But I'm pretty proud what our staff has done, K to, K to 12, particularly the, the, the elementary staff with, with their challenges. So, I don't know how the, the whole phase naming came about, but it seems to have stuck. I hope you can see my cursor, Phase 1 was our first week of closure, and we themed that as like a snow week. We put up some broad learning opportunities that students could take part of, part in if they wished. Things like virtual museum tours, going on Naviance, career college awareness, those type of broad things. While we did that, while, while they were doing that, a number of staff members, K to 12, were beginning to develop Phase 2, which involved taking content at a particular grade level and making activities to the tune of 10, 12, for each grade level and each content area, and, and having them available for students the following week. There was a lot of work that went into Phase 2, probably a work that didn't get realized, because as soon as Phase 2 began, we realized the length of our potential closure, and began to work on Phase 3, which we just started on Monday. That is the specific class, online learning environment run by their specific teacher. So Michelle and I would like to walk you through a brief pieces of each of these, and hopefully address any questions that you have along the way. So the idea of Phase 1 and Phase 2, it wasn't the continuation of our educational program, it wasn't meant to replace our regular instruction. It seems like such a long time ago, but if we think back, we were all on the point where the Governor said we stopped education for a little while, and we all were concerned about what the legal opinions we were getting about free and appropriate public education for all. So that was kind of the phase we were in. So we developed both K, K to 12, things that students could engage in. 15 to 20 minute, or 15 to 30 minute learning activities, and as I said, they were by grade. So there were, there were 5th grade math activities, there were 5th grade science activities, 5th grade social studies, 5th grade ELA, 5th grade music, 5th grade art, etc. To the tune, a 5th grader may have had 50, 60 things that they could choose from. In addition, they could have chose from any other grades. At the secondary level was presented in the platform called Canvas, which is a learning management system. And that, at that time, the elementary did not have Canvas, and they used the, the website to present. Again, it was a voluntary thing for students to do, and the teachers were not directly involved in presenting the lessons or doing any type of feedback. So that was the concept for Phase 1 and Phase 2.
Example of the elementary learning opportunities that were offered both in Phase 1 and 2, we offered opportunities in all content areas. It provided a structure for students and parents that wanted their students to have something throughout the day. In addition, we provided social, emotional learning activities. We provided specialized programs, so for any students that were in special education courses during the school day, they also had program opportunities online. We also looked at a variety of virtual field trips. If you take an example of ELA, if a student was on our website, they could easily click on the hyperlink, and it would take them to an example of two to three activities for each and every day. The students overall completed a variety of activities on a daily basis. Out of the 3,400 students we have at the elementary level, over the two-week period of time, looking at Phase 1 and Phase 2, we had over 1,000 students completing activities every day.
At the secondary level, very, very similar, we put all students, grades 5 through 12, into the same Canvas course, a 5,600 student Canvas course. And in that Canvas course, again, were a series of, 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 of learning activities. And this is just one example. Here's grade 7 math, grade, grade 7 reading and English, grade 7 social studies, and grade 7 science. And each, each activity had a series of other activity, or each area had a series of learning activities underneath them. So a 7th grader could not only partake in these activities to the tune of, to their core content areas, 10 to 12 of them, but also in music and art and phys ed, etc. They also could go back to 6th grade and review that. They could go up to 8th grade, and they could see the entire high school populated by course of the same level. So that was our Phase 2, and I'll spare you the tour of that. There's a lot of good work there by, by our teachers that probably did not get the full exposure. So right, right now, it sits as a, a place where we can go back to in the future, even with live instruction, to be able to use some of, some of these activities. So during that time, while students were in Phase 2, we brought teachers together to begin to develop Phase 3, K through 12. And it looked, it looks very similar, K, K through 12, but there are some nuances. And first, we have to pause and talk about what we did. We developed an asynchronous learning environment, which is very much like college online, online learning. What it means is that there's no particular time that everyone is together online at the same time. And whatever unit of time, at college it's a week, for us it's a day. Students may log on whenever they choose and complete their activities, do what they have to do, learn what, what they're supposed to learn, and they demonstrate what they're supposed to have learned in some overt form, alright? And they do that throughout the day, and then they're finished their work. It allows flexibility for the family. Our teachers do the same thing. Throughout the day, they, they, when they're available, go online and take a look at student work, give feedback, etc. There is no synchronous piece mandated. That, that, that would be when you all arrive online, like we are now in a Zoom meeting. Or you're all online at the same time doing a discussion board. That's the exception in our present environment, and probably the exception around the area. There are some schools that have tried it. Whether they can stick with it or not, it has, has, has yet to be seen. If you think about it, think about your family, and think about each of your children having to be somewhere every 45 minutes following a school bell schedule, and the teacher's family having to be there, making sure that the technology's available, making sure that mom and dad are working from home, or they're not even at, they're in the home because, they're not in the home because they're essential workers. So we're going, we went with an asynchronous learning environment with a splash of synchronicity in it. And our teachers are using Zoom periodically, like we are. They're meeting with their students, you know, online at various points, but the majority of it is asynchronous.
So over the next series of slides, I'm going to go through the steps that we have taken over the last several weeks for elementary in Phase 3 for online instruction. I'm going to start with identifying the platform that was chosen. I'll walk through the planning stages, the development of courses, how we're monitoring it overall, as well as give you an example of what a Canvas course looks like for an elementary student. Rob. Okay, so in the beginning, we had to identify a platform to begin with. As you're aware, our elementary schools did not have a learning management system like Canvas, as the secondary schools have. Individual schools and teachers use the following programs, Google Classroom, CSO, and Class Dojo. There was no consistency amongst the buildings and/or grade levels. So we needed to research possible options to implement online instruction. First, we started with Canvas, since the system was already being used at the secondary level. We also looked at online solutions like Edgenuity, Odysseyware, and Apex. In the end, we decided to go with Canvas, as we felt it was important to have the Shaminie-designed instruction by our Nishamany teachers. Once we identified the platform, we needed to develop a system. As you'll see, we have 3,400 students at the elementary level. In order to train teachers in a two-week period of time, design lessons, and place them in Canvas, was going to be a big task. So we divided our 250 elementary-certified staff into teams. We looked at grade-level content teams, specialist teams, special education, academic enrichment, as well as English language development. Each team is led by an elementary principal, with support from CNI supervisors, coordinator of student affairs, lead teachers, coaches, and pupil services personnel. Once those teams were established, we identified the need for planning standards-aligned lessons. Each team was divided into a planning group, as well as identified with one to two Canvas leads. So not every teacher is actually building the lessons within Canvas. Teams were tasked with the following. Reviewing the content and standards required for planning online instruction. To begin, they had to look at what every grade and every building had taught up until school closures. We also then needed to look at the standards that needed to be covered between that period of time and June. Planning standard-aligned lessons needed to include a warm-up, a lesson, a practice, practice activity, as well as an exit ticket. That was the expectation for planning lessons that would go into Canvas. We also required each team to complete a shared planning template for all lessons. Not only was this for this past week, but it's also going to be for every week moving forward. Here's an example of some of the planning sheets that were used by each department and grade level. So here's an ELA example for 3rd grade. So we took every standard, we surveyed all the teachers across all the buildings, we identified the standards that were covered up until school closures, as well as what needed to be covered. Although you would think that every standard is covered day-to-day at the same time, you have to remember, every class is different, all students are different, and the pacing sometimes is different. So we needed to identify, how do we move forward to ensure all students are receiving the necessary standards, the necessary instruction between now and June? In addition, I'll give you a math example. The standards are outlined, this is a 3rd grade example. Again, all teachers were surveyed across the buildings, across the grade levels. We then identified what needed to be taught. The staff was responsible for identifying what week we would teach which standards, and then when would it go into Canvas. This gives us an outline of what we're teaching from this week until June. Lastly, here's an example of the planning template. This is a 2nd grade planning template that shows yesterday, as well as today, for math. You'll look, and you'll be able to see, and anyone from any elementary team can look at every planning template any day, though it be able to identify the warm-up, the lesson, the practice activity, and exit ticket. That way, everyone is able to, one, contribute, and/or understand what's coming next. Once the lessons are designed, we then need to begin to build them within Canvas. As an elementary department, we decided to use a blueprint course in Canvas, so to, with that way, we can allow each grade level to build a course together. As I said earlier, not every teacher is building lessons within Canvas. We have Canvas leads. By using the blueprint, we can sync the completed courses to every homeroom teacher at the district level. Canvas leads receive training to build the courses using the blueprint model, to create one course for each grade level, which includes all content areas and specials. You have to remember, we're not working with elementary, with secondary kids. We have 5, 6, and 7-year-olds, so we needed to make this seamless. Canvas leads from each team needed to design and build the lessons, then within the blueprint. Here's an example of the template. For a homeroom, this is an example of a 3rd grade. The banner is at the top, but then you'll see buttons at the bottom. Within one course, the student sees all of their content areas, as well as their specials. So how do we do this with 250 staff for 3,400 students in a matter of two weeks? We needed to monitor it and publish at the same time. So each principal and supervisor are leading teams, and they're monitoring the progress throughout each week. As the planning of lessons and the completion of Canvas pages are built, principals and supervisors need to indicate the completed steps on a monitoring checklist. Friday of each week, all planning and Canvas work must be complete. Once final review is complete, we sync the blueprint at the district level to ensure every student receives the course and the new lessons for the following week. Here's an example of the planning checklist. As you can see, you'll see examples from kindergarten through 3rd grade, the multiple areas that go within one course, the lessons, the blueprint, and then the overall review. All of those boxes need to be complete before I can sync. This finally takes us to the Canvas view of a student, as well as a tour.
Alright, hold on here, I'll see if I can pull this off.
Rob, if you could bounce back one minute, there's still one more slide.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's alright, it will just show them an overview. Alright, so on a dashboard, those that are familiar with the secondary Canvas model, secondary students have multiple buttons on their dashboard, one for each course. For elementary, we have one button, so they have a home course. So for example, this is a 3rd grade student, they have one button, or one course, if you will, on their dashboard. For a student that has, that also receives special education and/or gifted support, they would have a second course. So if a child clicks on their button or their course, they would then have access to all of the content within that one course. This is create easy navigation, so that everything is in one area. If the child clicked on language arts, same at the secondary level, they would have a week's view, and then it would be broken down by day. So yesterday and today, for language arts, appear on the screen now. Now the video is going to be shown by Rob, which was developed by Jim Gasser, which takes us through a student view of Canvas. Believe the, the course is 3rd grade.
This is a periodic overview of a typical day of online learning for our elementary students. To begin the day, the students will log on to their device, whatever device that may be. This is an example of a laptop. And their first stop is going to be going to the Clever app. When logged into Clever, they're going to access Canvas through Clever. So from here, we're going to search for the Canvas app, and click on Canvas. Canvas will automatically load up after it is clicked through Clever, and it will take them to the dashboard. So in Canvas, this is the dashboard of all of the courses that the student is enrolled in. So in here, we have instructed our students to go to the class, and the first place that they're going to get is the homepage. So on the homepage, you will see recent announcements, as well as anything that the teacher is trying to portray to the students. And eventually, when they scroll down, they will get to the buttons. Okay, these buttons are links to the lessons for each subject. So we're going to go into mathematics. Once we click the link, it takes us into the module of mathematics, and you can see that it is broken up by each day. And then inside of each day is the activities, which are part of the lesson for that day. So since it is Tuesday, let's start with Tuesday. And we're going to go in with the first part of the math lesson for Tuesday. And we're going to go in with the first part of the math lesson for Tuesday. And as you can see here, there is a warm-up, a video to watch. Okay. Another lesson in here, fractions in context, fraction reminders. And then we're going to go down to the bottom, and once we complete all of this, we click next. Okay, so now we're into the next part of the activities. Click on the link below and make sure to answer all questions, take your time and check your work. We'll click fractions in context, and it takes us to Khan Academy. Okay, and let's go. We'll go through and complete this activity in here. Once we're all finished, students will be back into Canvas. We're going to click next. All right, check for understanding, our exit ticket tells us what to do. All right. Finally, we click next. There's an optional extension activity, fractions, and we have stop. All right, for today. When you get to the end of our lessons, we've instructed our students to go back to the homepage, and they can continue with any, the next lesson or next topic to work on. When the student is on the dashboard, you will notice that the course is listed here. Also, to the right, there is a to-do section, which provides a list of things that are coming up or to do for the day. Also, students can click on the calendar to view activities and assignments for the day. And when they complete an assignment, you'll notice that the assignment is crossed out when they have completed an assignment.
That gives you an overview of what an elementary student sees now that they are in Canvas as well. We're going to move to the secondary model, and of course, at the end, we'll answer any questions.
So what Michelle just described is pretty amazing. Not only did they do that with the curriculum, they also added purchased setup through the infrastructure of IT, the software, and then delivered it through a product that no one had been trained on. So that is just an amazing accomplishment. At the secondary level, we've had the advantage of having Canvas since the fifth grade came into the middle schools, which is, I don't know, six or seven years ago. And for the most part, the setup is very similar. In Phase Three, secondary has 30-minute, approximately 30-minute lessons in each class or each course. So if you think each, every student has six courses a day and maybe a special every other day, that gives them with this setup about three to four hours, hopefully closer to three, of work each day, Monday through Thursday. And Friday is set aside for catching up and getting help from your teacher. We'll talk about that more in a second. So unlike Phase Two, we have teacher-designed lessons. Very, very important that we didn't farm this out to some canned company that delivers our instruction. These are Nishamani-teacher-designed lessons, and the teachers are involved in coaching the kids through it, giving them feedback on their work, and making sure that they progress as needed. To help that happen, just like the elementary, there's a check for understanding and a participation task that I'll talk a little bit more about as we proceed. Friday at the secondary is what we call office hours. There's no new work for students to do. This is a time where a teacher will set aside a period of hours, I've designated two, where they'll be available for immediate email or phone contact or Zoom meeting to assist students and parents on what they may have difficult, difficulty with throughout the week. This is not the only time that teachers are available. Monday through Thursday, it's their own asynchronous time schedule. Friday, we've asked them to nail it down to a specific time so people know when they can be found to get assistance from. Grading is, is an issue at the secondary level as it needs to be defined. So there are two ways, two grades that a student can earn in the fourth marking period, grades five through 12. One of them is a satisfactory grade, and the other is an incomplete grade. What satisfactory means is that they've completed the tasks on their given days to a particular level at the end of the fourth marking period in June. So a student goes in, does their 30 minutes of learning, and included in that 30 minutes is some type of demonstration, check for understanding, and a participation task. If they complete that, not at any particular level, assuming they've given their best shot, and obviously, they've demonstrated that they've done what they need to do, they receive participation for that day. Take a participation as a check or no check, a one, a zero, a yes or no. And then at the end of the fourth marking period, a few months away, we will set a benchmark as to what percent of the days available should they have participated to get a satisfactory. Whether that be 100%, 90%, 80%, 60%, who knows? Let's see how the months and weeks progress with the pandemic, so we can set the bar. I think in talking about all the details, both Michelle and I forgot to mention that this entire plan is centered on student and family needs. As we can't predict what's going on in any individual family home now, nor two weeks from now or a month from now, we want to make sure no one is held at a disadvantage, at least in a long-term sense. So this satisfactory idea with the incomplete, meaning if they didn't meet that bar at the end of the fourth marking period in June, they don't get an unsatisfactory yet, they get an incomplete. And when we can get them back into school, whether that be June, July, August, or September, we sit them down with their parents and say, hey, you didn't do what you needed to do in in the spring, whether it be their fault, or they just weren't able to do it, they didn't have access, things in the home were not conducive to learning. We give them the appropriate amount of time, X weeks, and the resources they may have been lacking, and give them an opportunity to make up some portion or all of that work that they should have done in the spring. And if they do that successfully, the I turns into an S. If they don't, the I turns into a U. Grades five through 12, marking period grades disappear and blend into final course grades. So that is an issue that needed to be addressed. Final course grades will be determined by the three marking period grades and an S in the fourth marking period. At both the high school and middle school level, we've done away with the final exams because they'd be impractical and we'd have to rewrite them. So final grades will be decided by three marking period letter grades and an S in the fourth marking period. For the most part, the three marking period letter grades get us to a nice clean grade for a final grade. If it doesn't get us to a clean grade, we'll use that S as the higher of the questionable grades and make sure we are on the benefit or on the side of the student's benefit. If for whatever reason that system does not produce a grade that the parents and child are happy with, we'll use what many colleges have moved to. So if in math, I received a B, and I've never received a B in my life, and it's because of the pandemic and the system we put in place, parents and students will have the choice to remove that B and put a satisfactory in there. What that will do is that S will be credit-bearing, credit towards graduation. I've met one of my math requirements, and one of my 21 credits needed to graduate, but that S will not be calculated in my cumulative GPA as to never, as to not impact what may have been a negative impact on my GPA because of that B. So that's been explained to parents and students, and other than the fact that we haven't actually done it yet, there don't seem to be a whole lot of issues with that. Weekly progress will be marked through ones and zeros. Any particular day, students will be able to find that updated every Friday in Home Access. So they'll be able to log in and see this week, sometime on Friday, and they'll see Monday as a one or a zero, Tuesday as a one or zero, Wednesday as a one or zero, and Thursday as a one or zero. And if there are any zeros there, the child has the opportunity to go back and make that up and fix that and turn that into a one. One of the other caveats of the secondary level is the idea of going deeper. You also saw that at the elementary level. Within each lesson, there'll be a component where students can go further if they want. So as every teacher does that every day and every week, it gives the individual who has a relationship with a particular teacher or a passion for a particular subject to go further. So if I'm a 10th grader and my English teacher, we're going to read Kill a Mockingbird again and go in-depth to that, and that's my passion, I want to do that. I can do my minimum in math, my minimum in science, my 30 minutes, and then run with my English teacher who I like, and I want to read Kill a Mockingbird. I'd probably pass on that, and I'd go with my math teacher. Somebody else might want to go walk in the woods and identify leaves with their environmental science teacher as their extra piece, or they may choose not to do anything extra. So that's the overview of the secondary level. To picture what happens, they log into their dashboard, and this is an eighth grader at Sandberg, and they see each of their courses. And this particular eighth grader must have been in the school musical because she has a school musical course to keep track of things. And every week, they'll log in and see the week, they'll see a particular day, and they'll see the activities that they have to do on that day. The learning piece, the participation check for understanding piece, and the actual going deeper piece. I'm going to pause now and show you a video from Mrs. Pahulik. She's a sixth-grade learning support math teacher at Pequesting. I got an interesting email from a father who said, "With all due respect, sir, this lady did what you did in writing. It took you 10 pages to explain it, and she did it in a four-minute video." So it kind of made me laugh, and I thought, you know what, we should probably use this this, this four-minute video to explain what secondary students will do. So here's Ms. Nicole Pahulik explaining to her sixth graders about how they're going to get through their day.
Hey guys, this is Mrs. Pahulik. I hope you are all well. I am sending you this to show you what is expected of you, beginning on Monday, April 13th. So what you are looking at now is your Clever page. We all kind of know what that looks like, I think. What we're going to do is to click on Canvas. When you do that, you are going to have your dashboard, which is all of your classes that show up here. We're going to focus here, not on the calendar right now, we're going to focus in our modules, or our courses, I mean. So you guys are my lovely sixth graders, so you're going to see Math Six Pahulik. When we click there to get into our class, you're going to see Monday, April 13th at the top. You're going to see a week of lessons in here, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then we'll talk about Friday in a minute. So what you're going to need to do is to go on here Monday. This is not on here right now, I will publish it on Monday. You're going to click here to access the lesson, you're going to click there. And then you'll see the topic, which is ratios, day one, the essential question, the learning target, and then three things to do. So you'll scroll down, the first thing that you're going to do is to watch two Khan Academy videos. Okay, I know you're not big fans of Khan Academy. What I'm going to ask of you is that you give it a chance. Try these Khan Academy videos. I will change it up and do YouTube videos. I'll even throw in some me videos in there. I will change it up so you don't have the same type of videos all the time. So you'll watch those two videos on ratios. You will take part in a discussion board, so you'll click here to the open-ended ratio question. Write in simplest form, the ratio of six cats to 10 dogs. You'll click Reply, and you'll answer that question. You'll go back to the lesson, the lesson is where we were at. You'll watch those two videos, you did the discussion board, and then the third thing to do is ratios. So we can click on ratios, and then here is your participation task. So it says, this is your participation task, this must be completed for participation points. So every one of your classes is going to be set up this way, where you have a lesson, and then you have this participation task. I had that embedded in my lesson, but just in case you forget, I wanted to make it super, super clear for you guys, this participation task is what needs to get done. So if you clicked through that lesson really quickly and you happened to miss it, it is here again for you. Did you answer the four-question Canvas quiz? If you didn't, if you forgot, then you can do it right here, and you can just take that quiz right there. I'm going back to the homepage, okay? So what you're going to have to do is here's the lesson. Make sure you do this participation task for all of your classes, not just me. And then there's going to be a going deeper optional. And what that means is we're taking the lesson one step further, and there's a little bit more of a complex type of activity in there for you. So that's what the pattern is going to look like for every day. You're going to have a lesson, the participation task, and a going deeper. That should be the case for all of your classes, because that's what we were told to do. Now, once you get to Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, you're going to have participation tasks for each one of those days. And then on Friday, I will have office hours. I will give you a two-hour window where I'll be on my computer. We can probably Zoom if you have any questions. You can email me if you have any questions. This is like where I am available for help. Along with, I am still going to do Zoom on Mondays and Wednesdays too. So we will have that in there as well. And then a going deeper. Just as a little reminder, I have the mind-body connection stuff from Mr. Passman, so he has some meditation in there, the learning to juggle thing is in there. I will keep that in there for you guys, okay? So this is where you want to go for all of your classes and the modules. Of course, you can check the calendar, and there will be stuff in there as well. So I have the sixth-grade Pahulik, and you know, I put things on the calendar. But where you're going to see what you need to do is going to be in here, okay? I hope that that makes it a little bit more clear for you. Email me anytime you have a question. Always checking my emails, and I'm done, so hopefully I will see you or talk to you soon. Take care, until Monday, bye-bye.
Back on the PowerPoint?
Yep.
So that's an example of what our students are seeing across the district, that common format. And it's also an example of the personal attention students are getting. It just makes me smile to know that they are connected to, every kid is connected to many people like Nicole, taking care of them like, like that. So, and please don't think that every lesson has Khan Academy in it. Michelle and I went through this about two hours ago, both realized we picked math lessons that had Khan Academy in it as a demonstration, so that just happened to be coincidence. Math teachers have a great resource there as far as canned Khan Academy demonstration videos in, in short order. So here's some data just from our first day. What you're looking at is students online in Canvas looking at things Thursday and Friday, or last week, Monday was our first day, giving you an idea of, of the increase that we got kids back on, 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 on Monday. In addition, some other quick, quick view, this was before nine o'clock on Monday morning, there were roughly 2,300 students already online at the same time, K to 12 working, and that number stayed pretty consistent throughout the day. Elementary slide here, Michelle?
Sure, here's an example of a Canvas report that I've been pulling. I review both yesterday and today, and we'll review every day moving forward, how many students are actually engaged in elementary Canvas activities. Here's the quick view of a page that a student would have access to, so that, as you know, they have all content and specialists. Rob, if you go back one. So then you'll see by building, just this data is from yesterday. So our largest elementary building is Tuwanka. Yesterday, we had page views at the student level of 144,362 views. So the reason that number is high, you have to remember, you have multiple students going in multiple times a day, but you also have multiple-view pages. So those pages include every content, every activity, every section, not only content, but specials. So the significance of our first day online yesterday So the significance of our first day online yesterday as elementary students in Canvas. Um, we had a great first day. Students were involved. The percentages in every single building were high. Um, and we expect to continue to support families that are not on and are having difficulty. Get on and, um, be able to successfully complete activities moving forward.
So this next slide is secondary level and it just first day. What it does is we ask T, T, teachers to, uh, give us a, an idea of what percentage of their students participated, uh, on, on, on Monday. Darkest blue being 90 to a hu- hundred percent down to darkest, uh, yellow or orange being less than 50%. Uh, and you can get a general feel for the take just from Monday. Uh, I would have guessed it would have been the other way around. So we have to investigate this. Uh, it could just be that, uh, it's bad data because they don't have a class any particular day. Uh, at some area at the elementary school. Or it could be that, uh, these, uh, younger kids are confused with, uh, the plat- the platform. So we have to take it down to a more individual level. On a Friday, we'll be asking students about their experience, uh, through a survey. Uh, we're also going to continue asking about, uh, student participation and each building. Is developing a plan to make contact with families. I know Sandberg by Thursday believes they will be able to contact in person, every family on a phone. Uh, to see how they're going and also identify those who have not participated yet to see if we can provide assistance. Uh, along, along, along the way. And then hopefully by next Friday or so, we'll survey parents to see what they think is. And if we have to adapt, we'll adapt from there.
And then Rob, just to clarify, those, those two bars at the bottom are fifth and sixth grade, correct?
Yes, they are. They are. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So as we move on and bring this to a close here, um, those are our three phases, but we haven't stopped yet. Uh, we already have phase three and a half ready to go. Basically that's when we've given them too much to do and we have to back it off a bit. Um, so we have plenty of work out there. The question is, is it doable? Is it doable for a senior, a junior? Is it doable for a fifth grader? Is it doable for a first grader? And they may be different answers. Uh, so we have a plan to back it off in, in every other day. Or a shorter lessons plan, uh, as we get feedback from families and students over the course of the first couple of weeks. Uh, but we need to let the hiccups and mistakes and, uh, newness of it filter out. Uh, so we can actually get, get down to how the instruction, uh, is, is being taken. And then phase four, we're hoping we don't need, uh, but we are, are setting ourselves up for it. Phase four would be the unfortunate circumstances that our staff can no longer continue in its present capacity. And we're not able to replace them with substitutes. Uh, and, uh, that would be a scenario we're hoping that won't happen. Uh, cause that means the Shaminie and the community are not in a place we are now. But we have planned for that in, uh, we have, uh, um, bringing in outside vendor that can, uh, produce a curriculum. Based on a course content that students can move through in a self paced manner. Uh, so that will be on the shelf if, uh, under the unfortunate cer- circumstances that it may be needed. So I'll pause there. That was long. Questions, I'll, we will, we, questions from the board. We'll be happy to go back to a particular slide that may have confused you. Or if you want to hear about how we got here and the pluses and, and minuses of Michelle and I and the entire cabinet are, are ready to take questions.
Uh, Dr. McGee and, uh, Ms. Burkhalter. I just want to make sure that the public is aware of, of what we're doing here under our, our requirements. We want to give our kids the best education that we possibly can under these circumstances. Um, but in no way can we replace, you know, the school classroom environment. And can you just, you know, give some commentary on the, those expectations versus the realities that we're, we're faced with dealing with?
Right. Uh, so I think, uh, I think Michelle, Michelle, Michelle's plan articulated it the best. Uh, the elementary staff went through and found out what they really need to do. Uh, know as a foundation for the rest of the year. And Steve's right, there's no way you can replace what goes on in our, our classrooms with our teachers, our hall, the hallways with our support staff and our administrators. You can't replace that environment. Uh, all we can do is hope that we, uh, we move them forward a significant amount. That we can pick up in September by readjusting our curriculum again. Uh, so the start of seventh grade math probably won't look like it did in the past. The start of seventh grade math will probably look a little bit like the end of what sixth grade math should have been. Been this, this year as we kind of phase in or phase back into the regular program. In some areas that might take more than a one year to be able to catch them up. Uh, but, but that is our plan and that is the work of the future as we move, uh, move, uh, throughout the months. Michelle, anything else on that other than what?
Sure. That's one of the reasons we outlined and looked at specific standards that we wanted to cover by specific grade levels. Because not only do we then have a map of the entire time we're with a school closure and move to online instruction. We know what September brings. So we can say, okay, in third grade, all students received X. And we know we need a review period of the following skills. And we need to make sure that everything is covered so that this child doesn't have splinter skills moving forward. Because we want to make sure that as in the Shaminie community, we're providing students that, um, one may be able to get on one day. But maybe they can't get on the following three days. So they have access at all times. Um, but at the same point, we know exactly where every teacher needs to go back to in September and they know exactly what was taught. One of the reasons we designed it this way at the, at the elementary level is because all students are moving to the next grade level. And all students need, every teacher needs to know, well, what was taught that previous grade level? So everyone has access to everything. So our fourth grade teachers have access to third grade plans, et cetera. Um, we have families that are going to struggle because of the current pandemic. Not only are our families going to struggle, but we have teachers that are struggling as well. So we need to make sure that one, we have empathy for everything that is going on. We're flexible. Some families may be able to get on in the evening. Some families may be able to only get on once a week. Some families we need one to one calls for. And we're doing anything and everything we can for those families. Um, our kids are going to be able to receive what they need based on individual basis.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from the other board members?
Yeah, I would just like to, uh, chirp in again about how impressed I am with how well the, the Shaminie community has pulled together in this, in this situation. I, you know, as a, uh, I'm glad I'm not teaching this year because my technical skills would have had me in a panic. But I, you know, I, I, I think it's, you know, I, it's, it's testimony to everybody, uh, from the top down and from the bottom up. Just how well this seems to be, to be working. Uh, I, I do have one, I, just a question. Um, is there any, any thought given to next year? Uh, in terms of a sort of a, a, a pre-test in some of the subject areas to see just where some kids are. Regardless of subject.
Yeah. And that's important because we do need to know how did they do? And a lot of students, we want to make sure that in September, they have those skills that they had in the previous year that they retain them as well. So we use universal screeners at the elementary level, both for academics and ELA and math. So we will continue to do those. And then we can identify and build interventions based on where did that child come in that time? Because it is important piece. Um, and you made a great comment of how everyone pulled together. This, the staff has done an amazing job. From, um, like those that don't feel comfortable with technology have, they're leaning on their colleagues. They're doing phenomenal planning. They are, coaches have been phenomenal. And I have to say Beth McGinty and Jim Gasser have. Um, it been around the clock, working with families and teachers and making sure everything is working every single day. Some of our teachers, our administrators, our parents are stepping in and our students. We even have students making little screenshots for other students so that they can show how to get on. And it's been a just a really nice experience in a difficult time.
And I'd, I'd like to echo what Michelle, Michelle said, the, the, the teamwork. Principals, teachers, staff, but it goes beyond that. It goes to parents and students. Uh, they're all working together to help each other, uh, figure out the environment and do what, and do what needs, needs to be done. Excuse me. At the secondary level, Dave, Dave, uh, made, made me laugh as far as his comment about the testing in the beginning of the year. Uh, that is a great idea to figure out, uh, what has been missed. And if I know, uh, us at the secondary level, we'll retool those final exams we put on the shelf to be a diagnostic piece. Uh, strip them down and see if we can use them, uh, to, to figure out where individual students or clumps of students need some extra help. That's a good idea.
All right. Anyone else before we move on? I saw, already, uh, thank you much for that presentation. I'm, I'm sure we'll get some questions for the public, uh, that will, um, bring you back for. And, uh, I'm sorry. Is there someone has something to say?
No, I was just going to remark. Yeah, that's me, Steve. I was just going to comment on whatever.
Go ahead, John.
Job, I think. And, uh, thank you both and your entire staff. I think it's just phenomenal what you've got to put together in such a short time. And with the shifting sands of what's going on, that you've been able to stay on top of this and provide, uh, uh, an educational experience for our staff, our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, we're going to move on to, uh, 3.06 additional reports. This month's semi annual report is from, uh, Paul Meehan, the assistant to the superintendent, director of administration. His report can be found on board docs. This will bring us to our first, uh, public comment period. Each speaker will have approximately three minutes to speak. Uh, please identify yourself. Um, we'll have Mr. Stanley log on for a second to tell the public how they can identify themselves on, on a system. Please state your name, your occupation and the area that you work on. And please, uh, be respectful in your comments. Uh, Mr. Stanley, uh, can you provide some instructions to the public?
Yes. All they need to do is, uh, make sure that they're unmuted. The controls at the bottom left of your Zoom screen.
All right. Any anyone from the public?
I'm not seeing anybody.
I'm, I'm not seeing anybody.
Steve?
Yes.
Hi, this is Angie Manning. I'm a New Jersey public school teacher and I live in, I live in Langhorne, Middletown Township.
Hi Angie.
Hi, I just want to say, I just want to say thank you. You know, Jersey's a little different. We've been teaching from day one, but last week I had an IEP meeting for my daughter who's going into high school. And I want to say thank you to the staff that just really reached out. They were very considerate and very helpful with a daughter who has anxiety and ADHD. This was really, it was really helpful. And I think I really need to give a, a really good shout out to the staff for all of their doing during this time. And you know, when you think about school, you're not thinking about the IEP meetings. And other things that do go on. And it's just phenomenal what's been happening. I just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Manning. It's highly appreciated and, uh, and that's what we're here for. And any of those other parents are out there, please, if you, if you feel there's something, you know, not being done that should be done. Please reach out to your building level administrators and, uh, uh, we want to hear from you. We want to make sure every child to the best we can is, is provided for all the time, but especially under these, these circumstances. So thank you very much for those comments. Is there anyone else from the public? Okay, hearing none. Uh, we're going to move on. I'm sorry. Is there someone there? No? Okay, we're going to move on to, uh, 4.01 is an action item for this evening. Giza project work at Lower Southampton. Be resolved that the Nishami School Board of Directors hereby authorizes the continued construction of the Lower Southampton Elementary School. Giza renovation project phase four, which was halted by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania cease of construction order. Effective March 19th, 2020 at 8:00 PM. Subject to any and all contractors implementing and continuing to comply with the social distancing. And other mitigating measures to protect employees and the public. Be a further resolve that the, that this authorization is provided in compliance with the Pennsylvania Department of Education guidelines. Due to the critical nature of the project completion as it relates to the displacement of students. Potential litigation and its financial impacts to the district and the Bucks County Intermediate Unit. The motions on the table, may I have a second?
Second.
Second from. Was that Mrs. Hollenback? Or was that Mrs. Boyle?
Sure, I'm seconding it.
Mrs. Hollenback. Thank you. Um, this is a roll call vote. Mrs. Burns, take the roll, please.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenback?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marington?
Yes.
Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Mr. Sorillo?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Motion passes nine to zero. That'll take us to, uh, section 5.01, items for approval at the public meeting. 5.01 budget transfers. 5.02 bids. All items are currently listed on board docs for the public's review. Item six, committee report.
Mr. Parentano.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
And just, uh, I want to remind the board members and executive, we were talking from personnel standpoint about the school calendar. Uh, but the, the school calendar will need to be a action item. And so that would, would be a, a 5.03 item, school calendar for the 1920 school year. Uh, we'll have that ready for you on the 28th. And what that will look like will be additional school day. Will take the place of, uh, what was going to be a day off for election. That will allow us to end school, uh, on Friday, the 12th. So that'll be our last official student day. And then we'll have some staff days that'll come after that. Uh, so there, there will be a slight calendar adjustment, basically keeping the same calendar. Uh, but just replacing one day on the calendar and able to move up and end school on a Friday. I think that'll work well from the virtual world that we're in. Well, thank you.
All right. And you'll make sure that's added to the agenda, Mr. Jones.
That'll be added for the end of the month's meeting. That's the action meeting.
Thank you. Committee reports, uh, business operations, Mrs. Hollenback?
Excuse me, we are actually having a meeting like in this forum on Zoom next Tuesday, 6:30. I am not sure who's sending out the link for that, but the public is welcome to join. Like they've joined tonight and it will be discussing the budget.
That link, that link, Mrs. Hollenback. That link and all the links will be at the exact same location where this meeting link was. It's the same site on our, on our board. You can find it from the, uh, board docs and get to it. And all virtual meetings will be located and posted inside.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, Mrs. Boyle, would you please do the educational development and the policy?
Um, yes, and the next, um, education meeting is going to be on the 19th of May. And the, uh, the next policy meeting will be on the 14th of May.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. Mr. Sullivan, could you do facilities and planning, please?
The next facilities meeting will be next Thursday, the 23rd. And that will be a virtual meeting also.
Thank you. You said the 23rd?
23rd of April.
Thank you. Yeah. Very good. And business is the 21st. Great. Representative reports, IU board, Mr. Sorillo, please.
Good evening, everybody. Um, a quick note from the, uh, the IU board. They have a, uh, you may be aware of a mobile Fab Lab. And, uh, during this time of, uh, um, of extreme circumstance, uh, they've been, um, uh, the, the mobile Fab Lab is equipped. uh, the, the mobile fab lab is equipped with a 3D printer. Um, and they started making some um, personal protective equipment. Uh, first originally for local law enforcement, specifically face masks. And it worked out so well that they have uh, prepared a lot more face masks and made large donations to uh, St. Christopher's Hospital during this time. So uh, they're using their, their resources as uh, um, uh, best suited for, for what's going on right now. So uh, my hat's off to them for, for getting involved and uh, and continuing to do their good work.
Thank you, Mr. Sorillo. Mr. Allen, could you please give us an update on the tech school?
Uh, yes, I can, Mr. Parentano. School, but we moved ahead with the academic portion. And uh, the trades are mostly, of course, theoretical. Um, the practical and physical nature of the trades are still being worked out, how it's gonna be accomplished. Moving forward to that, uh, I should say, in addition to that, announcement was made that the National Occupational Competency Testing Institute, uh, those NOCTI tests that have required, that requirement has been waived. Um, and the Pennsylvania skill certifications that's tied in with the NOCTI will not be issued this year. Um, upcoming, the, let me see. Um, I've written all over my notes here, sorry. Uh, I should point out that there, there doesn't, we don't anticipate any issues with seniors or underclassmen not, you know, assuming that they have all completed their requirements. They will graduate on time, um, as we expected in, in June. Uh, what that graduation will look like, the same as we're going through, uh, will be determined, hopefully. Uh, I'd also like to mention a couple of meetings coming up. The virtual board meeting for the tech school uh, will be April 27th at 7:30. I have a board meeting, we have a budget meeting coming up on April 16th from 5 to 7. Uh, that'll be our, I believe it's our second budget meeting, uh, second. Then um, I believe that covers everything, um, other than I will point out that we participated, a couple of our administration members and uh, uh, we just worked with a governance session that was put together by the Bucks County Intermediate Unit and uh, Mr. Ellis Katz or, or lawyer. Um, and it was just virtual, going through the, uh, what these virtual meetings of school boards would look like. Um, the legalities of it, the ins and outs of it. And I just wanted to report that there were a number of us involved, including Jones. Uh, and I thought that was very informative and successful meeting. And I believe that's all I have from the tech school, thank you.
John, can I add something?
Yes, certainly.
Um, I just wanted to report that the tech school has also given out Chromebooks and they started online uh, learning a few weeks ago. Um, they do take attendance every morning. The kids are required to be in online, um, a great portion of the morning. And then they're holding office hours in the afternoon. So similar to what we are doing on Canvas, they're using Google Classroom. Um, but they have also executed a great online learning forum for the kids.
Did I not mention that or did it cut out?
The beginning of your presentation cut out.
I didn't hear the first part of what you said at all. Sorry, John.
Hey, it's the Chromebook, you guys gave it to me.
I, I have a question for, uh, I, I have a question for either Cindy or John. Uh, or I think it was John, you mentioned that the NOCTIs are being waived. Um, I know that there's some students that, uh, for certain trades that are requiring, uh, I guess some kind of NOCTI score. Will that be an issue?
Um, you'll have to check with, you would have to check with Leon on that. Uh, but this was done at the state level that those requirements were waived, Adam.
They were, and what they're doing, Adam, is that each chair of the different department is looking into an equivalent test that can be taken over the summer if necessary.
Great, thank you.
That brings us to Nishamani Education Foundation, Mrs. Bowman, please.
Yes, um, the Nishamani Education Foundation met yesterday, 4 o'clock. Um, we held a Zoom meeting. We discussed our canceled fundraisers, like the Wizards, and we had a um, dining out night at Bertucci's, both of which will be rescheduled. We also put our baskets, obvious, for obvious reasons, are on hold. Um, they're all secured within the schools, but um, they're just on, we're just keeping them stagnant until we come back uh, together, probably in the fall. Our next meeting is going to be, uh, we also went over our bylaws. We discussed a couple of changes in our bylaws. And our next meeting is going to be via Zoom, most likely May 11th at 4 o'clock.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Uh, that brings us to the PSBA liaison, which is my committee. Um, as many can imagine, uh, all the activity at the PSBA has been, been over, uh, the shutdown of the school system. Uh, the PSBA uh, helped uh, advocate for school districts in the Act 13 that was passed. Um, making sure that school districts will continue to receive subsidies from the state as we would normally during this time. Um, also uh, providing for uh, exemptions that we acted on tonight uh, to start construction on important projects that was uh, curtailed uh, due to the crisis. Um, I guess there'll be more to come. Uh, you know, it's unfortunate that uh, the, the school year has been uh, shut down, but you know, it was deemed that was the, the best uh, solution to deal with uh, uh, this crisis and protect the health and safety of our students and public. And um, that's all I have for that. Um, that brings us to our second period of public comment. Again, it's three minutes, you can list your name, the area you live in, uh, your occupation. Uh, please uh, conduct yourself properly. And uh, anyone that wishes to speak, uh, just do so by uh, unmuting your microphone. All right, I'm hearing none. So we're uh, gonna move on to future topics. Do any uh, board members want to discuss any future topics? Hearing none, that will bring us to a board comment. Uh, we'll take on the same form we did last time. I'll just call out, uh, Mr. Kovitz, if you have any comments for this evening?
Uh, none at this time, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz. Uh, Mrs. Bowman, do you have any comments you would like to make?
I do. I want to first say, I'm very impressed with how we executed the online learning. And I contribute that to our professional development that the administration has provided to our teachers who seem to be very tech savvy. Um, they're very familiar already with using a flipped classroom model in Nearpod and with the Avid program, a lot of online platform learning going on there and the high school with Canvas. Uh, I personally wanna thank Doc McGee and Mrs. Burkholder. I know you've been working around the clock on executing this. It really shows, it's a well thought out plan. I love that you are including a phase four as a just in case. I think that is really important, um, you know, to our students. We have to be prepared for everything. And our, most of our students already had technology in hand, unlike some, you know, it's a lot of uh, school districts are struggling right now and have not even begun online learning. So I really just wanted to give a shout out to you. I also wanted to personally thank all of the um, staff that's working around the clock in the hospitals and all the emergency responders. I know it's been really crazy out there and I wanna thank you for your dedication for keeping our community safe. And I hope everyone stays well.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Uh, Mr. Marington?
Uh, no, no comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mar, Mr. Boyle?
Um, yes, I'd like to uh, give my congratulations to Dr. McGee and Mrs. Burkholder for doing an excellent job and also uh, uh, their, their staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sorillo?
Yes, I would like, just like to uh, echo Mrs. Boyle's uh, sentiments. Um, Mrs. Bul, Burkholder and Dr. McGee and as well as all the other administration, uh, Mr. Jones for doing a uh, a, a really good job uh, during these extraordinary times. I, I, I think we're going to uh, to be fine. Um, also, I wanna thank the, the food service workers providing all those meals for all the students. Um, that is a very big deal. It takes a lot of time, energy and effort. And um, I, I know it's very, very appreciative in the community. So thank you to all, all of your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Sorillo. Mr. Sullivan?
I'll just echo everyone else's comments, that's, I agree, we're doing a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Uh, just thank you to everybody for all of your hard work and all of the departments, support staff, teachers, administrators, and everybody today.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, do you have any comments to make?
I appreciate that, thanks, uh, Mr. Parentano. I do, I do just wanna say, uh, because I, I meet with my superintendent colleagues often on Zoom. And I know that everyone's doing a lot of hard work, but Nishamani does stand out as unique in the county. And I wanna make sure the board members and the public who are here with us tonight understand that we feel like we stand out for very good reasons, and I think it was evident tonight. But we took our time, we chose, uh, I said, uh, I think earlier today to the cabinet, you know, this is really a tortoise and a hare story. We, we took the route of the tortoise, we did it right, we did it slowly. We made sure that we had a program that we could be proud of and that we would be, it could be faithful to it for the duration of this closure. And uh, as a result, though I'm sure many districts are doing some very good work, uh, we know that we're gonna be able to do this good work uh, for the, for the duration. And I do thank Dr. McGee and Michelle Burkholder. Uh, they're probably chuckling when you say, and their staff, they don't have a lot of staff, uh, but they do have a lot of good people supporting them in all corners and all facets of this organization. Uh, from teachers to coaches to principals who are doing really good work, leading. And uh, and I thank all of them for all the good work that they have done. And our kids will be the beneficiaries of that. Thanks, Mr. Parentano.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Allen?
Yes. If you can hear me this time. Um, I wanna, I also, I, I pointed out that I appreciate all the work that Doc McGee and Ms. Burkholder did already. Um, I also wanted to add Chris Stanley and our IT department and all the work they've done on uh, not just the Nishamani webpage, but also on social media that I feel very important. Um, what, yesterday were all the first day online uh, photographs that were all sent in. I think you're doing a fantastic, wonderful job of keeping the community together, attached. And I just wanna make mention of that, 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 that is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
No problem. I'll just finish up real quick. Um, I wanna pick up on something that, that Mr. Jones said, that um, primarily about quality people. Uh, what he said is true, Nishamani's staffing levels at the administration are some of the lowest in Bucks County when compared to the population of our student body. And some districts believe in quantity. I think at the Nishamani, we've always taken a look towards quality. And the, the quality of the people we have, not only in our administrative staff, uh, but in our building staff, both at the certified and support level, uh, continues to be excellent. I think this results of, of, of what we've been able to put out in the short amount of time that's, that it's needed to be planned is, is above what any other district has done, including those districts that are quote unquote, recognized as the gold standard. Um, Mrs. Bowman mentioned about where we are technology wise in the Nishamani. Uh, far outpaces any other district uh, that I'm aware of in Bucks County, except for maybe one that I know of. Um, I just can't say enough about how everybody has pulled together and really put their best efforts forward. I'm constantly impressed every day with uh, Mr. Stanley. As uh, as John mentioned, uh, the, the way he keeps the community informed about what's going in our, going on daily in our schools and uh, making sure that those people get recognition. I know it's just a little bit, but it's important that uh, that their hard work's recognized and as well as the students are recognized as well. Um, people behind the scenes like Mr. Mayen, uh, what he does every day. Oh, um, Mr. Devlin in his department, uh, Ms. Christie and her IT department, what we've been able to put out in our IT department is exemplary. And uh, those people have really, really done such a fantastic job. So I just wanna close by, by thanking everyone in the Nishamani, including our Nishamani community, our families, our parents. This is an effort by everybody. It can't be done without everybody working towards the same goal. And I just want you to know that the, the sport appreciates it, the staff at the schools appreciate it. We want you all to stay safe. We're gonna get through this and, and um, we wanna make sure in the end, our kids are made as whole as we can make them. And for those seniors out there, this district has not forgotten about you guys. Um, we're working, the administration is working diligently to try and make sure that we can give you your day that you deserve. We don't know where that's gonna end up yet, but we're working hard uh, to make sure that you're, you get the recognition you deserve. So again, the Nishamani community, thank you, everyone stay safe. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Anybody? Second? Thank you, Mr. Grayland, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, thank you public, have a great evening.
Thank you.